Welcome everyone to today's council meeting, Thursday, August seventh, two thousand and twenty five, six thirty four P. M. Roll call please.
Mayor Alma Bautron.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabrina Rodriguez. President, Councilmember Juanita Molina.
Absent.
Councilmember Diego Garza.
Present.
Councilmember Catherine Solorio.
Present.
City Clerk vacant, Treasurer Ishma Spandola.
Please raise for the flag salute. Thank you. All right, so we can move on, now we can work on the additions and deletions, we have an addition to the consent calendar. We received this notification for an event, a little short, within time to put on the agenda, so we would like to put it on there for consent. On the consent calendar, item number four, that happens to be the parlor wrestling, is that it? The parlor wrestling overnight mush ball for August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five at eight P. M. So do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Diego, second by Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, one absent, so that's four yes, thank you, so we can move on to item. To the public comments, is there anybody from the public that would like to approach the podium right now to address the council at this time? Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jim Polesgrove, I wanted to introduce myself, I'm a candidate for Assembly District thirty one. I'm a lifelong Valley resident, thirty nine years in public service with the various agencies. Flood control, Fresno Flood Control, City of Fresno, and also the County of Fresno. I retired about two months ago to run my campaign full time, and. I think I did, my main reason to be in here is to find out more about parlor. Now, I want an education on what the needs are, what the people want, what I can do as the assemblyman for this area to help our lives get better. So, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments at this time? Mr. Dollywa?
Yeah.
Did you, did you want to address the council at this time? Oh, okay. Oh, you got a team, oh, I didn't know that. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Sdejas, representing the residents of. Of Zedeker and Dinuba Avenue, and. As I had emailed Mayor and enlightened everyone else, there is an issue on Zedeker Avenue. And you guys may, may not have seen the severity of it, and it's taken a toll on the residents where. We have tried to seek some kind of resolution, it has gotten so bad. It is a waste system that was once there, now it's being housed by the homeless encampment. So you're, you're gonna have maybe children? Kids there, wives, ladies, young gentlemen, all there. Okay, just there was pictures that were obtained, just at least so that you guys can see because. Okay, because when you're passing by on Zedeker, you can see the waste and how bad it is. There has been explosions, there has been robberies, there has been everything imaginable that happens out there. They do get the brunt of it for the sake that it's just a stone throw away, but we are feeling it now. It's gotten larger and it keeps getting larger. You got health diseases out there that people are catching along with crime that is going on, not only within our residence. But then you know that whatever's happening in the city, it's been a hideout for them, because no one is looking for them anymore. Everyone's there, so we're housing this, and we want to seek what can be done to help us as a community.
Thank you.
The police were called a couple of times because there were guns out there, a person was caught with guns out there, that was on the news.
Can you approach that way that online they can hear you?
So, yeah, I'm Manrub Dollywa, I'm with Gherjab Dollywa, we both live on Zedeker. So more there, as she said, there's been a lot of problems, there was a break in in our house, there was a break in in my cousin's house at one A. M. In the morning. Police were called, more than a couple complaints were made to the police regarding guns, there was a guy with, out there with a gun and. We saw him and we called the police right away, right? So it's not a hassle just for us, it's a hassle for the city, for all of us, for our community, because there have been drugs out there that were caught as well. You go out there, there's little kids running around, I mean, you know, we all want the best for everybody, but people have their fruits stolen. The crop out there was damaged, you know, tractors were, tractor tires were stolen, so just stuff like that, that's been ongoing continuously. It's not just a one-time occurrence, you know, we could deal with that as a community, but it's more than one, and now, so there was a break in at Alberto's house not too long ago. Or trying to break in, right? So these are all the things that are going on right now, you know, it's really hard to think of our safety because we've been a safe community so far, you know?
Right.
And we're not getting problems, the city's also getting more problems as it's growing. So, that's something, you know, we want to see what we could do about that.
If anything, maybe, I'm not sure if you had that email as well, did you C. C. That email?
I tried to C. C. him, but he's not on the website, and then the only active email that was there was Mr. Serta. But when I tried forwarding it to him, it came back to me, just as the clerk, I tried emailing it to the clerk and it came back to me too.
What we can do is for the next meeting, we will agendize that, that way we can have our city manager figure out a solution for that area. It's been an ongoing problem, we do know that, that way we can give him some time to kind of figure out what's the best course of action to take. So we can agendize that for the next meeting, and then you can come here and also, you know, listen to what we were working on and what we're planning to do. We know that it's been a problem, it's been like this for a couple of years, you have been emailing me and the previous city manager and Serta. So, this is why I think now that we have a city manager that's permanently here, that can address that and being that now also with the state. Working on funding and how to mitigate through that issue with the encampment. So, what we can do is for the next meeting, we'll set something up for you to be here, present and here, because it's not agendized, we really can't do much right now. Just hear the complaints or the concerns, and we can put it for the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, and just also, he touched light on it, but I understand that they're also defecating into the water valves. Which is now going to your guys' food supply as well, so it's not just one little area that we're talking about. It's obviously, it affects in all different systems, and I have already reached out to different leadership, you know, board of supervisors. I've reached out to the public health, environmentalists, I'm reaching out and I might be grasping for straws, but we are, I understand, not. That this is an isolated location, it is somewhere that is. That has taken its toll everywhere else, but we do need to work and see what can be done, we have been patient, so.
There have been like major fires as well, there's been a lot of major fires, you know, the fire department's out there every other week, you know, there's a lot of that stuff going on, you know, so.
It's the propane tanks that you can only imagine, it's not keeping anyone warm right now at this season, they're not barbecuing, so you can only imagine. What is really taking place there.
Right, so again, what we'll do is put it on the agenda, and what I'll also do is C. C. our city manager, Mr. Palmer, so that way he can be on there. So you can communicate directly to him as well, so he can see the footage or whatever pictures you did provide, because you did provide quite a bit. Of evidence of what's taking place, so we'll do that for the next meeting, what day is that? The twenty first.
Okay, we'll see you guys.
At the same time?
Yes, it's always at this six thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Okay, hearing none, so we can move on to the next item, we have a consent calendar. And that is item one, two, and three, is there any, and there's a fourth one for the parlor wrestling. Is there any item that we'd like to pull for discussion at this time?
I'd like to pull number four, just to kind of read what, it's because it's not on the agenda, just to read what it, what was given to us, yes.
Okay, is there any other item? Any from the public? Hearing none, so then go ahead.
What was added is the parlor wrestling overnight mush ball tournament, it's a team of two fifty entry fee at Veterans Park. Friday, August fifteenth, from, starting at eight o'clock, I think Mikey's here, do you, do you have anything to say?
Hi, it's really just a fundraiser for our youth programs, we do both the youth and the high school, and we kind of put it all together. Our high schoolers are going all year round from summer all the way into the winter, which is their high school season, and our little kids are going all summer long. So, we are trying to compete with the bigger schools like Clovis and obviously Fresno. We also trying to compete with Salma, they got a great little kid program right now, so we're trying to get all the money in and try to get all the fundraising in that we can, because. A lot of the parents see what's going on in the other cities compared to what we got, and we're just trying to make it as competitive as possible with our children. So, we appreciate that you guys approved it, and we're gonna try to invite as many teams as possible, so hopefully we get a lot of teams out there.
That would be great, thank you.
Michael Garza.
Thank you, thank you for the information, okay, is there any other questions? Okay, so do we have a motion to approve item one through four?
Motion.
Diego and Sabrina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, four yes, and one absent. Okay, now we can move on to the next item, and that's the necessary action for adoption of resolution of two thousand and twenty five dash six three. Confirming the diagram and assessment annual levy two thousand and twenty five, twenty six landscape maintenance and lighting district presented by Javier.
Thank you, good evening, so this is our landscaping and lighting district. Essentially, every year we do three rounds of presentations for the, for the assessment, annual assessments, and we use this, this to. To pay for the lighting on the streets and certain areas and for the landscaping, some of the areas as well, so it's something we do every year. And so tonight, we're just looking for approval so we can send this into the tax roll, get this going.
What exactly is it that you guys do with the mitigation part for the lighting, like, just for the, maybe we can let the public know?
Yeah, so what it is really, it, it, the city has certain, certain areas where we're responsible for the lighting, the street lighting. So we pay the P. G. N. E. Bills for the lighting, and we also responsible for the landscape maintenance of it. So, we contract that with a company that goes out and maintains the areas that are inside of the, the district. Not, not the entire city is in the maintenance district, only mostly it's the newer colonies, the newer areas that are in it. And it's been like that for a long time, because you have to opt in to, to this, so the people who are in there get essentially landscaping and maintenance. A lot of people do their own landscaping if they're not in the district. So like picture, the ones that are in the district, if you picture like a subdivision where there's kind of shared strip, kind of picture Parley Avenue. In front of the new subdivision where it's not necessarily somebody's yard, but it's, the city has to maintain it, that's part of the landscape district.
Okay, so that way they can understand a little bit about the landscape mitigation process, because I know that sometimes I hear where. You know, they think that the city is responsible for all the areas, which I am gonna ask, and I'll bring up an update on that for some concerns that did happen on some areas, so. But thank you for sharing that, so that way everyone has an idea what exactly that consists of, is there any question?
Yeah, I would have liked to, so Javier, are you saying like, so in my district on Fifth Avenue in the new development, how they have that pathway? Are they taken care of through the city, or are they taken care of through this light district?
That is part of the light district, yes, on Fifth Avenue.
So, these funds are for them to come clean it, or for the city to clean it, and?
Yeah, so.
The funds come to the city.
Yeah, it's to the city, but we do hire a contractor to help us in some areas, that area specifically is not in the contractor's contract. The contractor, the sisters is, has bigger areas like the trails, like, like the Parley Avenue Trail, some of the parks. But we take care of the Fifth Avenue one as a city.
And that would be the contractor that we currently have, correct?
Yeah, correct.
So, so pretty much that, those funds are covering that contract.
Yeah, correct.
So if there's budget cuts, there's really no need for us to eliminate that contract, because it's being paid through these funds.
Yes, this is part of the, the tax roll, so we get these through, through the property taxes that are in the district, and it pays for that.
Okay, great, that's good information for staff to know about those contractor, contractors that are out there, because I've known that in the past. Budget cuts, they try to reduce on, on funds and, and we already know that we don't have enough staffing for the entire city. You have two landscapers that are out there, and that, and, and they have the offender program that comes over here from the probation and helps, and now you have. Sanger and Salma and Fowler that are actually utilizing the, the probation offender program to do cleanup areas. So we're not getting as many as of those, having to do their community service in the city. Before we used to get ten, now we're up to like maybe four, so it's not enough, so I just hope that staff, once you're looking at the budget. I know that you already did it, but once you're looking at that, to keep that in mind, that there's these funds that don't directly come out of our general fund, they come out through. Through this other source of funding. Thank you, any questions from the public? Okay, hearing none, so do we have a motion, oh, this is a public hearing, is it, yes, it is.
Yes.
All right, so now let's open up to the public, because this is a public hearing, so if there's any questions from the public, they may approach the podium at this time. Okay, hearing none, this public hearing is now closed, and so we can have a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Sabrina? Who's second? Diego, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, four yes, and one absent.
And then, just to make sure, that one is item number five now? Yeah.
No, I, yeah, but it's under consent.
I have a suggestion for you, since you've, you added a number four under consent, I suggest you take under regular business and. I suggest you take under reg, regular business and name it four A.
Nope.
Four A.
Four, because it's four items under consent calendar.
Correct. And then keep the rest of the.
The reg, yeah, the regular business is, stays the same.
Yes.
Okay.
But, uh, if you want, for purposes of eliminate any confusion, um, this item, you can, uh, just designate it as four A, and then.
I think there'll be more confusion with that than just adding it to consent calendar.
I'll defer to the clerk.
No, because the numbers are always, we don't start all over with regular business, so it's, if it's four in consent, then the regular business would be five, so if you added one to consent, then the next one would either be five or four A.
Okay, so you don't do it where you just have under consent, one, two, three, four, and then regular business, because that's a different category, that's why I would think it would be different. Okay, well then, whatever works, as long as it's clear. All right, let's move on to the next item, and that would be, uh, recommendation, uh, for the city council adoption of, okay, that's a district lighting, I'm sorry, consideration and necessary action designating voting delegates to, and attendees for the League of California Annual Sit, uh, Conference, October eighth through the tenth, twenty twenty-five, presentation by, uh, Berta, our assistant city manager.
Um, this is something that the council goes to every year, and we need to designate a voting delegate, because only one person is allowed to vote when they're there, and I need to know who's gonna go, who's gonna be the voting delegate, who's gonna be the alternates, we can pick two alternates, and I need to know who's gonna be attending. I know Sabrina's already said she can't, so I need to know who else would like to attend, and who would be the voting delegate.
I also can't attend that, so.
Okay.
Sorry, I also can't attend those days, it's October.
The tenth, the eighth through the tenth.
Eighth through the tenth, yeah, I have stuff at work that I have to do, so unfortunately I can't.
Kathy?
I don't think, your mic.
Did we?
I won't be available at that time.
Did we ask?
She wasn't sure either, so, um, Mayor, I know you said you could go, so I guess you'd be the voting delegate, and maybe we could put Janie as the alternate.
So, okay, all right, um, then we'll do it that way, um, and then just pending her availability?
Confirmation.
Okay. All right, so then, since, do we have a motion to, anybody from the public would like to address that? Okay.
Trinidad, government's out three oh five First Street, uh, now who's gonna be going to this conference? Did you get two people?
The mayor will be the voting delegate, and Ms. Molina will be the alternate, and our city manager.
So you do have three, 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 two people to go or leave, okay, because, uh, that's why you're on the council, you gotta attend some of these conferences to make sure that that information gets back to the city of Parleyer, so we never get left behind. What happens is if we don't attend these conferences, a lot of times we miss out on a lot of things that are going on out there in other, or in other communities, and what can benefit the city too. So, yeah, uh, that's what I wanna know, because I couldn't hear who was going and who was not going, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, so do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Diego, second by Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, uh, four yes, and one absent. Um, we can move on to the next item, and it's, uh, consideration and necessary action of adoption of the resolution twenty twenty-five dash six-five authorizing the contract, uh, contract award of Tuolumne, um, Street Pedestrian Safety Improvements Highway Safety Improvement Program. This is by, okay, it said Barry, something like, who is?
The contractor.
I know, but normally we have like who's presenting it. Thank you, go ahead, uh, Javier.
Yeah, so, so last year we applied for H sub cycle eleven, um, and we were, uh, lucky with the, uh, award of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build the, uh, con, concrete improvements on Tuolumne and Erika, out there right now, we have the temporary green, um, uh, we painted it with Public Works, and that gave us temporary safety right in front of the school, uh, but with that temporary safety, we went ahead and applied for permanent funding to make that into concrete improvements, uh, the, the project's been designed, we're gonna have in-road lights, um, decorative concrete, uh, bull bouts, all concrete, so it'll make the Tuolumne Road there, uh, a little narrower for kids to cross right in front of the street on Erika, and, um, so we, so listed bids, we went out to bid, and we received two contractors with bids, um, RJ Berry Junior Incorporated for two hundred and twenty-three thousand and forty dollars, and we also received Aris Engineering LLC, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars, um, so with that, the lowest bidder was RJ Berry, so tonight we are, um, recommending to award the contract, uh, fiscal impact will be two hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars, uh, of which a hundred and eighty-five thousand four hundred will be grant funded by the H sub program, with a local match of sixty-four thousand through our TDA street funds.
Okay, is there any question?
And this will be the same way it is right there on Tuolumne and I Street?
Yes, like we did in the other school, yeah.
Yeah, that's a very important crosswalk, um, when you're getting from those houses to Benavides, um, because the cars come from, uh, Mendocino, and it has that curve around the, so having those lights and will be very, uh, part of the safety for the kids, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
Is there any questions from the public? Or comments? No? Hearing none, so do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Diego, second by Sabrina, all those are in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, four yes, one absent. And now we move on to the next item, which is consideration and necessary action, Assembly Bill twenty-five, twenty-sixty-one, codified in, uh, Government Code, Section three five zero two point three, passed in twenty twenty-four, requiring public agencies to hold a public hearing to address the status of the job vacancies prior to the adoption of the city's final budget. Myra?
Yes, thank you. Um, as mentioned, this is to satisfy the Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one, um, there is no, um, no action needed, it's just informational purposes, so I have prepared a PowerPoint for you, um, so you can go through that.
Do you want to turn off a little? Thank you. Next slide, please.
Okay, so effective January first, twenty twenty-five, public employers are required to disclose the status of vacancies and recruitment retention efforts, um, it is designed to foster transparency, um, about the number and types of vacancies the ci, the city is experiencing, and how we conduct recruitment and staff efforts to address them.
Next.
And so the total, um, authorized full-time employee positions for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, uh, was eighty-eight for City of Parleyer, the number of vacancies that we had is thirteen, and so that turns to be a fifteen percent vacancy, and then you can see at the bottom, it has the different vacancies for each department, so we have a city attorney, administrative assistant, uh, recreation specialist, lifeguard, water and wastewater system supervisor, wastewater operator grade, one and two, park special programs lead, utility maintenance one, two, and three, um, building inspector, police sergeant, and police officer reserves and two jailers.
Next slide.
And so this, uh, is a little overview of our recruitment efforts, um, so the city manager recruitment was conducted by WBCP Incorporated, uh, the finance director job ad was published in LinkedIn, and indeed, uh, the city attorney job ads are published in the League of California Cities and Western Cities, um, community engagement available via city website, um, and we utilize LinkedIn for advertising, um, there were two promotions in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four and twenty-five, and then the current full-time recruitment is for the city attorney position.
Next slide.
And so this goes over our retention efforts, um, we have an annual employee appreciation dinner, um, and we give out the years of service certificates and plaques, um, there's employee team building meetings, staff training and development, we do have a take-home vehicle program for the police department and public works department, and then we also offer special certification pay incentives. Next slide. And so again, this is, uh, just a presentation only to meet the AB twenty-five sixty-one obligation, um, there is no action needed from the council at this time, but if you have any questions or comment, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Okay, do we have questions?
Um, on the.
On the light, please, thank you.
Hi. Um, just to clarify, on the take-home vehicle for the police department, are they doing that?
Um, I believe only the directors are.
For police?
Uh, police, uh, possibly, yeah.
If he does.
Can you find out for sure, because we don't even have that many vehicles for anybody to be taking that home?
Yeah, I believe it's just the directors, but I'll verify.
Those are, those are usually done, that's usually done in larger agencies, where they have enough vehicles, as it is, we're losing vehicles when they're burning, you know, so, um, and vandalism, so I don't think we have enough to, to really cover anyone to take home.
Of course, I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the public? Any from?
I think the, uh, it's just a comment, um, the chief vehicle is different from the actual patrol vehicles, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, I believe so.
Yeah, different color, and, so I believe, yeah, just wanted to say that, that way people know.
Yeah, no, that's why we wanted to make clarification, because she wasn't sure, so, you know, when you.
Is it different? Different color?
Give us that information of, if it is chief, because if it's chief, it's always been chief, but if it's.
Right.
Anyone else, then, yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, of course.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, and, and no, uh, questions from the public?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks for the presentation, we can move on to the next item, oh, do we need, no, no action, it was informational.
No action, yes.
Okay. And, did you need a public hearing, because it says public hearing?
Oh, yes, yes, we do.
Okay, so then it is a public hearing, and no action, though?
No action, just a public.
You don't need a resolution or anything?
No.
Identifying that you did this public hearing?
No, it just needs to be documented that it's been done before the budget adoption.
Could we still just do a, a resolution, just to cover that, because we do a resolution just for about almost everything else, this is a public hearing, and where there is no documentation for this public hearing, I just would rather have that to cover ourselves that we did comply with it?
Yeah, we can create it.
Um, this one, right now, that you just did.
Yep.
I mean, you can.
Yep, we can.
We'll make that change for next year.
Next year?
That's only, it's done during the budget.
Yeah, well.
So the minute action will take care of it for legal purposes, but going forward, we'll make sure that the.
Yeah, because that, normally, on any, um, public hearings that I've been part of, there's some kind of backup, it's, there's a, a resolution, something supporting that, and there is nothing with this one, so, yeah, we, we can't be doing things like that.
Of course.
So this public hearing is not open, and I asked the public if there was any, any comments, and there was none, so this public hearing is now closed, thank you, and since it's only informational, uh, we don't need to take any action, we can move on to the next item, which will be, uh, the consideration and necessary action to approve the operating, operating and capital budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, presentation by Myra.
Yes, thank you. Um, so this one, it's recommending the city council to adopt, uh, the resolution for approving the, uh, budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six as presented, um, I do wanna point out, there are a few changes from the last time that we had a budget conversation, and so I wanna go over those, so you can follow through, um, so if we turn to the general fund, it's gonna be page twenty-one. This page summarizes exactly what is going to happen with the fund balance.
I'm sorry to interrupt real quick.
Oh, yes.
Do we have it on, on the screen, is there, is there any?
No, I didn't, no, we can pull it up if we.
Can you, is it possible, Berta?
I can try and pull it.
Just, just try, at least make the attempt, yeah.
Yeah. Perfect, thank you, Berta.
Good job.
So if we go to page twenty-one. Next one, yep, right there. Um, at the bottom, you'll see that it has a summary of the fund balance, and so now that we're going to be transferring over the funds from, uh, the ARPA into here, instead of being at a deficit, we're actually going to end at a surplus of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and hopefully we can maintain that over the years, or help cover some of those attorney fees that's been taking us down.
Are we gonna go page by page and, and have like input, or are you just gonna go through it all, and then we, um, ask questions at the end?
I think, uh.
No, no, I know, but in case we have questions, do you?
Um, however you want to do it, we can do it as questions as we go, or I can go through the talking points, and we can go back.
I have a couple of questions, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, I, up to you.
Okay, okay, so.
Go over to Janie first.
Yeah, and then just, we'll go ahead and finish, and then.
Okay, perfect. And so, uh, some of the changes to the general fund that I did make, um, so one of the departments, um, it's fifty-six twenty, which we turned into page forty-six. And so this, the, this department was just, um, named incorrectly, in the last one, we had put, uh, recreation, however, it's actually facility maintenance, and so I wanted to point that out, that we made those changes on there, um, some of the administration expenses increased by two hundred thousand, and that was due to additional attorney fees that are being carried over from twenty-four, twenty-five, um, and that's on page twenty-five that you will see towards the bottom, that increase from what we brought in the requested to what is adopted. So you see at the very bottom, the highlighted in green, the totals at the bottom, you see that that little slide increased there.
Okay, did that, you can barely see the?
Twenty-five.
Okay.
The next change, um, we did was for part, the police department, and so some of the salaries were transferred out to the different grant funds that cover some of those salaries, and that one's gonna be page thirty.
Oh.
Up a little, yep, right there.
Let's do page first, then we get right into two.
Okay. And then.
Sorry, what was that, the change on that one, sorry?
The change was the, uh, decrease of three hundred thousand for the, uh, police department.
Decrease on the?
On overall, on the overall budget, for the police department.
So you decreased them by five hundred thousand?
Three hundred.
Three hundred thousand?
Correct.
So we're gonna be over three hundred thousand, I mean, three million?
What's that?
So we will be over three million still?
They will be pulling three million from the general fund overall, yes.
Okay, I have questions on that, too.
Mm-hmm. And then the next one, um, if you turn to page thirty-seven. This is Public Works, we just miscalculated on this one under professional services and fees, and so that was increased by twenty thousand.
What page is that?
Uh, thirty-seven.
It's kind of blurry there. Thank you.
The next change is page forty-four. This is the community center, and we added fifteen thousand to this one, um, for other equipment, and so we're planning on replacing the chairs and tables that are broken, and we run out for the community center to the public. So for the general fund, that's all the changes that I've had, again, at the, at the end, um, we. Again, at the, at the end, we are going to be in a surplus of about $530,000. The next changes are actually to the grants, and so we'll flip over to these grants. The first one is page 65. This is a new grant, and so from the last time we had the budget conversation to now, the budget workshop to now, we added this fund into there, and so now it's in the budget book. But it's a new grant that we got funds for the law enforcement. The next one is page 74. This is the Parleyer Flood Protection Project, it's been ongoing, however, this one was missed in the last meeting, and so I wanted to point it out, make sure that you take a look at that before adopting the budget. Essentially, this one's almost complete, the project is almost complete, we have about $213,000 left, and this will be covered by TDA. The next one is page 76. This is the Veterans Park Reconstruction Project that was recently adopted, and so we added this fund, and it's fairly new this year. Next one is page 77. This is the Parleyer Vision Zero Action Plan, and same thing, it's fairly new, it's been recently adopted, so we added this fund to the budget. Next one is page 88. This is the basin improvement. This is the basin improvement, it's been there, again, this was another one that was missed in the last meeting. So we wanted to add this one on here, it's in reimbursement basis, so there's no, there's no impact to the fund, to the general fund or any other fund, it will be reimbursable. And the last one is page 105. This is the CDPG program income. So this one, again, it was missed as well. We, these are loan repayments from the CDPG grants, and so right now, we're just having revenue come in, and we're trying to build up so that later we have enough funds to have some type of program to help out the public and residents. So for now, we're just collecting those revenues until then. And that's all the changes for the budget, do we have questions, and we have questions?
My question is, first, it's the ARPA funds. I did look on the guidelines for the ARPA funds for federal. Being that we're moving it over, the 1.9 that was supposed to be for the indoor-outdoor sports park, that those monies are being moved to the deficit, that was a $700,000 that happened from '24 to '25. So ARPA funds are specifically on for, there, there any effect from the COVID period from 2020? And being that this, this deficit is not due to the reasons of any kind of loss of funding from the COVID period, this is solely because, from what I saw on the budget, was that we were over the budget for the police department. Our police department has been always under $2 million, then we were at 2.8. Now it's at 3.8. So within one year, we went up to a million dollars over budget. That does not justify, to me, and if the federal government were to audit us, as to why we're moving those funds for lack of, of resources or, or revenues received from the state, or revenues lost from businesses, taxes, or whatever it is, because that's, that's the reason for that ARPA funds. ARPA funds is to, to help with the cities that, yes, were, that were on, in a deficit, but if that was the case, we weren't in a deficit before. The deficit, the deficit is from '24 to '25. So, the guidelines, I will send them to you guys, I didn't look them up. And my concern is that we're moving $1.9 million to go to the deficit of $700,000, to put us in a surplus. And it's not meeting the guidelines that are specific in that, in that information that I received. So, my thing, and that's why I was opposed to, to moving those monies, because it should be for the community, and the only way that the community is going to benefit from that is something that is for the community. And that indoor-outdoor sports park, you know, even though maybe some may not think it's not worth it, but it's something for the community, just like our downtown. Now, if those monies would have been better to move to the downtown project, then that makes more sense, because that's something that also helps our businesses. And ARPA funds were focused to help businesses, to help the community, to make the community safe during COVID time. Loss of, of funding sources that we received from the state or federal, this is why that money was allocated and given to the state, to the cities. Everybody used their monies based on whatever they felt the need on. I know Fresno made a mistake as far as using it for salaries, this is why they are in a huge deficit. We used it on, on actual, which it was to recruit more officers. But, you know, when you use a one-time funding source, you're not going to be able to sustain them. So this is why the city, back then, made the decision to use it for the community and not our deficit, because deficits are, they're, they're, you're going to have a deficit, and you'll fix and adjust that, you work through that, you work through that to, you know, get out of those deficits. It's happened in the past, I think we just need to work on how we manage our monies, because if we already had a million over on a police department within just a year, and we're, we don't have more officers, we have probably the same amount of officers, I don't know what happened, I did look at their, at the information that you gave us with, with where the deficit was coming from and the changes, and I did see that they had a lot of legal fees on there, too. Representation, I'm sure it's a lot that's going on with the department. But, we need to fix those things, instead of just putting a band-aid and moving money over. So moving money over, like, the $300,000, I know you're doing what you can, I'm not saying you're not doing what you're, what you can. I think that, from my perspective, is that we need to do more than just $300,000, because they went over budget by a million. $300,000 next year, it's going to, it's not, we're going to be back in the same boat. So, moving 1.5, 1.9 gets us through right now, this temporary time. But once we don't have ARPA funds to, to save us, then what do we do now? So, my thing is that we should have maybe moved it over to the project that I know Javier's working on with downtown. There was a lot of things that were, were approved in the past to be done, but now with these reductions and costs, things have been eliminated, so maybe we should move those funds to cover our downtown, to get it to what it was supposed to be from the beginning. So, to me, it's great if we had a surplus, because we got ourselves out of it, not because we given, we were given 1.9, and we put it towards our general fund. That, to me, is not how you work on things, and how you can get through that, because you're, you're just putting a band-aid, and you're going to continue with the next year, having almost the same situation. $300,000 is not enough, I, I, I think they need to stay within their means, and they've always had a budget of, of 2.8, and they should stay within that, 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 that amount. I did see that they went up $400,000 on their salaries. So I don't know where they're misspending, overtime, or what's going on, but something needs to be looked into as to why they're at 3 million. 3.8, to be exact, you know, so, that needs to be looked into. And I know our police department, we want to continue to have that, but if we don't focus on the police department, we're going to end up with what was happening in the past, where we were at the verge of closing the doors because we couldn't afford them. So what, we're going to go tax the, the community more again, and, and, and ask for more funding from Measure Q? I mean, there's a lot of things that we need to really look at and figure out where they need to cut, and, and the administration in that department needs to figure it out. The other thing that I had was, that was for the ARPA funds, and I hope that we can probably look into figuring out. Javier, what's the adjustments that we had for the downtown? I know that we were, there were stuff that were already approved before that are, are being removed, but what, what were they?
There was, in the past, in a couple of years, you guys have brought up things like the signs for the owners, you guys wanted to pay for signs that's not in the budget. I think you guys brought up maybe doing the rest, because we, we, we're stopping at the, I think it's J, so we're not getting to, yeah, we're not, we're not K Street, yeah. We're stopping, so we're not getting to the pool hall and all those buildings, in the past, you guys requested, is it possible for us to keep going? Those are things that you guys have kind of been talking about in the past, but we just, we've been trying to save, you know, keep it under the budget that we, that we were given.
Because you were only giving a specific amount, now that we're moving those monies, well then maybe we can make sure that he uses the rest for that, and just put the $700,000, but move the rest to the projects that he's been working on for downtown, because that's something that attracts, could attract more people to our downtown, and that brings business to our local businesses there, bring customers to them. And if they have customers, that brings more tax revenue for us, so that's, that's the reason for the, the ARPA funds, to create a way to bring more revenue to the city versus just using it a one-time deal, cover whatever is going to be one-time, and it doesn't really help, you know, for the future of the city to, you know, work on what's going to help us in the long run. So we, we want something that's going to help us in the long run. The other one that was about, you, you had the cannabis one.
Cannabis grant?
Yes, yes. Okay, so, that one, you mentioned, it's, it's law enforcement, and they, they just work on pretty much the community, and like, patrolling and making sure that
Right.
They're, okay, what about our cannabis? Do they do inspections, being that it's a cannabis grant? I would hope that they would go in there and do some kind of inspections to make sure that they're following the letter of the law, being that they have to have, you know, people showing up with valid ID, 21 and over, no one really hanging out at that cannabis location. The other thing is to, probably, and I think, Aaron, you mentioned that, and I, we worked with them before, to do an audit for the cannabis, because are we still only receiving $400,000 from them?
No, we actually just received another payment, so they're, they're
They're in compliance now.
They're in compliance with the contract, as I read, yes.
We're waiting for H. Till's giving us a proposal to do an audit.
Awesome, that, that, that's, that's what I want to hear, because we want to make sure that they are always in compliance, because I know what's happened in the past, I know how they've done business in the past. So the only way that they're going to be on that, and making sure that they pay their fair share every time, is by us showing that we are ahead, we're going to audit, and make sure that they're, they're giving us what they're supposed to. Because they give us, they just give us the minimum, but no one's really checking to see if that's, it's based on what their sales are. No one's giving us the information, or we're not having a third party look into what the sales are, we're just going by what they tell us. And that's, I'm sorry, but, you know, if we allow that to happen, most times you're not going to get the true numbers. So, I just want us to be ahead of that, so.
So that's why, yeah, we're waiting for the proposals to come back. Hopefully, we'll have an audit proposal we can bring to council and have an audit underway, probably by the, hopefully by the end of October.
Okay, great.
Now, on the, on the cannabis grant, there's specific guidelines on there, so I don't know if that would fall under one of the guidelines as to whether we can have
It might not, but that's still something, yeah.
It's my understanding, it's more of a DUI issue.
A DUI?
They checkpoint some things like that, piss for the overtime.
So it wouldn't have anything about, like, them smoking in the area as well, because that's, that's also against the law, you know, not just driving
Well, we'll have to check that, I think, but the big thing they're using it for is checkpoints.
So maybe that's what our staff is using it for, because that's the law enforcement side, as to, normally, they would have checkpoints. But I'm sure there's probably more language in there by looking at the entire grant itself, and, and seeing what else we can, we can do. Because my thing is that the complaints from businesses is that they're always in that area, and some people think that because it's legal now, you can smoke anywhere. And it's not like that. So I think also, education, you know, maybe having our information out there for the businesses that, that, or for that business to provide them, as to them not being able to smoke around in the public areas, and, and something like that. The other thing, too, was the grants, that's great, I'm glad that we have that. There was one more other thing, I'm just trying to go with that. Maybe I'll just let the rest have, if they have any questions, and I'll just look over what I have here.
I, I just had a question on the police department. So it went up from last year to this year, 1.8 million?
So, it was determined that 24, '25 year estimate was incorrect, it was actually underestimated by $400,000. So this number here is going based on the actuals, and giving them the 5% increase they normally would get.
But it's still over budget.
But it's still, the amounts have been incorrect for a few years, to my understanding, there was a lot of corrections that we had to make, some weren't being allocated correctly. And so when we made those corrections, that's when this budget reflected the true numbers of the PD and how much they
Can you send me that information as to where the mistakes were at, and just to, to support that?
Okay.
This way, it's not just, this is what's happening, it's backed up with proof.
Yeah, of course.
Then at mid-year, we can bring that to you as part of the mid-year presentation, where, where the adjustments, let's say, four, five years back, and what's wrong, what the true numbers are, and we can do that at mid-year.
Yeah, because I, you know, it, it, it still was over budget, it was over budget when it was 2.8, it was not supposed to be
It always usually is, yeah.
So every year, it's going up, and so by the time we know it, it's going to be our entire general fund, and we can't afford that.
But I just want to make sure it didn't go up from last year to this year, 1.8 million.
Right, right. It's just a simple 5%.
I'm just, that's what you said, I'm just, that's why I'm just clarifying.
Okay, you clarified that, okay, you're done. I said that it was 3.8, that we went over a million, because the previous information she gave us was 2.8 from '24 to '25. This next year is 20, '25, '26 is 3.8. So it's a million that was showing on the document. So I based it on the document that was given to us, and that's what it said, it said 2.8 to 3.8. So it was not 1.8 that it went up, it was 1 million, $1 million. But if it's off by a few hundred thousand, it's still over budget, so that's my concern.
Okay, my question is, what's causing that, overtime, or what's happening there?
It's overall expenses, but for the most part, it's salaries.
Salary.
The most part is their, their full salaries in general, their special pays, their, overtime has quite a bit, but overall, their salary, their initial salaries, the compensation and all that for special night shifts and, and those type of
I think you put that also on there, and it was from 1.3 to, I would think it was
And, and you can see it on page 29, if you flip to 29, you'll see the specifics on to the numbers there.
I remember you putting it on that other information you provided us, which was, you know, just to update us where you were at.
Right, so if you look at that salaries expense, that includes all special pays, yep, and that's most of it. That's where a lot of, of this fund goes into, is just salaries.
So, salaries is 1.7.
Salaries, if you see at the bottom where it says total wages and benefits, it includes liability insurance, workers' comp, their benefits, uniforms. It's 2.5 out of that whole budget.
So, and then overtime, 150. Where is the one that I was seeing? The liability insurance, 230.
And so this is the part where if you look at the previous year's actual budget that was estimated, this part here This part here where it says two point five was estimated to be at the end of the year at two point one. So majority of the increase or the discrepancy between there, the over budgeting, was mainly the salaries that were calculated incorrectly.
Yeah, I know, cause they, we, they've been increased quite often. And then attorney fees was a hundred thousand. So that's another, because we're paying for our attorney fees, this were the clarification to. Our attorney fees, which is for the city and whatever we're here. And then their attorney fees is another hundred thousand, so.
Correct.
So we're looking about, just in probably what, six months? I think we were at, you said seven hundred thousand?
So this one here, the attorney services that you see for twenty-four, twenty-five is four hundred and forty-five thousand.
But that's just for the PD?
Just for PD. And including any of the cases, and that's where this comes in, that's why it went down to a hundred thousand. Because we realized some of it should actually go into administration. So if you go to administration into page twenty-five, you'll see that the attorney services increased there from three hundred eighty-five thousand, that was actual, and it's gonna be into the seven twenty-five.
So twenty-five, so those are, are those the cases that we're dealing with in court?
Overall.
That would be here for the city.
Correct.
And, and the other hundred thousand is for PD itself and their, whatever's going on over there.
Correct, correct.
That's still quite a bit.
It's a lot, overall it's still coming out of the general fund, whether it's the admin or PD, but these attorney services are all coming out of the general fund.
That's why I, when I say about finding other ways to reduce that cost, did this.
Yes.
This is not.
And that's, that's the next step, is to see now that I, that we're up there in the surplus. Now is, how do we keep that, right? Or how do we increase the surplus by doing all these budget cuts as needed? Where it's possible to make sure that we maintain that and we keep growing instead of pulling more and more and more.
Budget cuts can only come from the general fund, because that's what they're sustained on. So if it's like Public Works, the girls here in, on, in the water department, that's different funds.
Correct.
So that would not help us if we do any budget cuts there.
It would just be general fund.
That would come from would be actually in the police department.
Yes.
So that's where our administrator needs to look at, where he, he's the one in charge of his department. He's the one that needs to make sure how he can reduce his budget. It's not, it's not the finance director's job, she, you just give him the information that he needs to know to manage his department. So I, I, thank you for sharing all that information.
Of course.
I don't remember, I know there was something, but I, I, that's why I kinda wanted to go when you were going, cause then I'll forget about it.
And we can do that next time if it's easier, that's not a problem.
Is there any other, any from the public?
My glasses, my wife's, I love, mine's broke, so. Uh, I have a couple, a few questions, and first of all, let me start, that downtown, uh, I know we've been at it for almost, what, two years, something like that? I didn't hear too, too well what you were saying about what's happening with this, this contract and why they haven't continued constantly to get that, that terminated.
That, that's not on the budget. That's not, that.
Could have been on the public comments, but that's not on the budget, but.
But isn't that a part of the budget?
Not the.
He was just discussing the downtown.
Not the contract itself. You can ask what's the status on the, uh, downtown with the ARPA funds, but contracts, that contract.
No, I'm not talking about the contract, I'm just talking about, you didn't let me finish, the thing is that I wanted to know, how long is it gonna take us? I know you have a certain amount of time to spend that kind, that money. Is, 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 is it, is it, is it almost time, how much time do we have for them to complete that?
Yeah, yeah, it's ARPA funds.
ARPA funds, we have until December of next year to, to finish them off.
December of what?
Uh, December of next year, to completely use them all.
So we're okay on that.
On the downtown.
What I'm only concerned because it's taking the amount of time it's taking, but anyway, another question I wanted to ask. How are we with, uh, with, uh, uh, Greenbrier? And what, what have they contributed to the community in the period of time that they've been here?
So we have a contract with them and some of their revenues, we get a portion of the revenue, so they contribute to the general fund overall.
So you, you have been receiving from the.
Yes.
Cause I under, I see that they haven't planted anything out there, so I don't know if that, that's gonna be other revenues that, that if we're gonna lose because they're not gonna plant, uh, that, you know, and again, we can't talk about the contract. But the thing is that, is that many, i- if, if we made a contract for them to be here so we can make that, that, uh, uh, the money that they're supposed to be paying us, and then they're gone, and they're not doing it. So partly losing out on a con, on, on a, on a contractor that suppo, or a business that's supposed to be doing business in partly so that we can benefit out of it. And if they're not here, that, that's kinda concerning. And I think that's something that should be looked into, uh, because if they're gone and they are still working here in partly uh, and, and the dispensary, where is that, where is that, uh, weed coming from? That's, that's what I kinda understand, but anyway, uh, and, uh, the, the thing with this thing is that th- th- this, this budget is really concerning. And I wanna tell you why, cause I know that you guys have four or five lawsuits on the, on the table right now. And I don't care how much money you put into it and you start grabbing from other, uh, uh, other funds to. I've, I've seen this before in the past, where they take from the sewer and they take from the, uh, uh, the water bill and they put it into the general fund, which is illegal, but they do it to make the, make the, the, uh, the, the, the general fund look healthy. I, I don't see how the general fund is gonna withstand, cause I know there's no insurance. Are we, do we still have insurance for the city?
It doesn't cover that.
Huh?
It do, it does, it wouldn't cover that.
Yeah, so there, there, th- this is what I'm concerned about, that all these lawsuits that we have, they're gonna come out of the general fund. At the end of the, at the end of the day, where are we gonna end up with that general fund? Now, you know, here we got a million dollars more than that, 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 the police department is spending. Now, there hasn't been any murders, there hasn't been anything that I could see that they were out there now. You said, but, that, that could have been used for, uh, for salaries? But isn't salaries supposed to come to the council?
No, I, I think she said that that's what it's been, uh, it's our salaries, there's, not our salaries, their salaries that has gone up, right?
Yes, yes, the salaries have gone up, so every year they increase by five percent.
For a million dollars, a, a million dollars in, in one year?
Yeah, but it's, it's that plus all the other items she listed right now, she mentioned right now is, uh, there's.
Well, uh, you know, those are kinda concerning things, because, uh, when you go from three point, two point eight to three point eight, that's, that's a lot of money. And, and as a citizen, we keep paying taxes and our money's going up in the air. We see no, no, uh, 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 no progress in the city. But the money is still there and we're still having to pay it as a taxpayer. Another thing that, uh, I was, uh, I was gonna ask, uh, about too is that, well, I'm not even gonna get into that right now, but anyway, yeah, cause it's just gonna prolong it. But anyway, I just wanted to, I mean, I got a few answers. I'm not satisfied with them, but I, I'm gonna have to go with it, cause you guys are the ones that are in charge. And at the end of the day, if we go bankrupt, we better know, we, we better let the community know why we're going bankrupt. Because there's, like I said, there's a lot of lawsuits, there's five, four or five lawsuits that I know of. And these lawsuits have to be settled at one time or another. And we had a great person that already had all the information that we needed. And there's a couple of frivolous lawsuits out there that shouldn't be settled. But anyway, at this point, I'm just saying that we better be careful with the, with the budget and see how we're spending our money.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other comments? Uh, so this is just a, um, an approval. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the?
Motion.
Okay, budget, Diego and Kathy, all those in favor? Motion carries for yes, one absent. Now we can move on to, um, brief comments from council, city manager, do you have anything to share with us?
Yes, it's been a fun month and a half, so I'm getting used to everything, so it's been great, uh, council's been really supportive. I know there were some issues regarding, we had a, looked like we were having a little bit of a cat problem out at the city public works yard. And looking to, uh, keep our employees safe, making sure they weren't gonna climb vehicles or anything, so we put out a trap. Um, unbeknownst to me, that there is no shelter space for animals anywhere in Fresno County. So, but to let the public know that there were no cats trapped, nothing, nobody was euthanized. I would never allow an animal to be euthanized, I've lived through that with another agency that where I had to take over animal control, it was really bad. Um, so, uh, if we were to trap and catch them, they would go to, you know, go to a shelter to where the shelter would be responsible. But at this time, there's, there's nothing going on, Public Works says tighten up some things over there, so it's a little harder to get in. And so, um, we're just keeping an eye on it to see if we're having a problem, because summer ends, we start to get into fall, winter, the, they're gonna find those warm engine blocks a nice place, and we don't wanna start a, start a motor and then get caught in a belt or something. So we're just gonna keep an eye on it for now, and nothing's happened, any cats have been running around by the public works yard, that's all I have.
Thank you for updating the public. Okay, Myra?
Just a quick comment, um, I actually wanted to thank the staff, my whole finance staff, um, for preparing this budget. It's been, we didn't have too much time to do it, so it took a team effort, so the whole finance department, thank you. Um, in specifically, I want to do a special thank you to Sandra Rodriguez, our senior revenue manager. Um, to Kathleen Vanderberg, our senior, um, budget analyst. And they weren't able to make it here tonight, but we do have Stephanie Trujillo, and she is our principal management analyst. So thank you all for all your help and this budget couldn't done it without you, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanna thank staff for the budget, um, it's here, got approved. Um, I just wanna, you know, move forward and let's get things rolling to build that, um, uh, revenue coming in and, um, have a healthy budget in the next coming years. Um, I wanted to say, um, the school, first day of school is on Monday. And to the community, please be aware that there will be children walking the streets to school in the morning between seven fifteen and eight o'clock. Um, our high congested areas are of course down Parler Avenue and, uh, Madison area. Um, and again, just please be aware of the kids walking to and from school. Parents, be careful driving your kids to school, don't flip it in front of the schools, um, during those times of day. Um, but again, I just wanna wish everybody a happy first week back to work for some of us. And, um, our kids have a good first week of school. Um, again, thank you to Parler staff, city staff, um, for all you're doing and getting things going, Public Works. Um, and of course our fin, our, uh, city, um, hall staff, again, thank you.
Um, I just wanna say thank you to Erin, Berta and Myra and the rest of the staff, um, for moving our city forward. We are going forward and pushing along, so I just wanna say thank you. And then that, I wanna thank all departments, all department heads, keep doing what you're doing and we'll figure all this out.
I also wanna thank Myra, Erin, Berta, great job. Myra, you're doing a great job leading your, your team. And the book, the budget book is way easier to read now, you're not this way and that way, so thank you for that. And the other thing I wanna thank Public Works, because they really went out there and worked in the veterans park. My constituents called me and said it looked neater, they went out and they pruned and what have you, and trimmed the bushes. We're excited because we're gonna have our new park, which I've been pushing for since twenty twenty, since I got on. And finally, it happened to my surprise, uh, that was a surprise from Sonia. And the other thing is that we're, we're, we'll probably be better off now that we have insurance. So we won't, the prior council and myself that I was in there, I didn't know we didn't have insurance. That, and I found out because I said, we have insurance, and no, we don't. You know, so now hopefully we keep track on that, but you gotta have insurance for everything, that's very important. I mean, no ifs, buts or ands, if you don't have insurance in your car, don't move it. If you don't have insurance, don't look for trouble, be good, you know, but, uh, that's all I gotta say. And Javier, oh, thank you, okay, thank you.
Do you have, you have an update on any of your projects or?
Um, yeah, we, we actually have, we have a total of four projects out to bid right now, so we, uh, we're entering construction season. Uh, our road project is out to bid right now, so it's gonna be doing around twelve different roads around town, so continual maintenance, just like we've been doing the last couple of years. Um, we are bidding out the, uh, the Zedeker Avenue water tank, it's currently out to bid as well, so you'll see it coming with bidders. Um, that's gonna improve water pressure on the, on the north, northeast side of town, next to Mexico. We have, um, our groundwater recharge basin out to, to bid as well. Um, and, and that's to, to recharge our groundwater, so we have a lot of things in, that are going into construction this, this year, uh, along with the Roundabout, so, um, we're pretty excited to get that going.
Thank you. Okay, um, so I just have a couple of things, uh, yeah, the Public Works, it's actually the landscapers that, that I mentioned, the two that have part of the contractors that work on the, on the actual parks. So it's not the, it's part of Public Works, but it's the landscaping department that, there's two, only two staff members with the probation, uh, um, um, people that are coming in to do community service, plus our contractors that, that help out with all our, uh, parks and areas downtown. One of the things I wanted to, uh, mention, uh, Erin, if, if you could please, um, send information to the businesses, uh, in downtown, because there was a situation that occurred with an employee that, um, was, and this is not the first time, it's the second time that happens, they're, they're blowing the area. The responsibility lies on the businesses to clean their area, just like the owners that, that own property and their sidewalks. They take care of whatever is in front of their, their area of, of the household. So there's an individual that continually, continuously, uh, insults, attacks, not physically, but verbally, uh, to staff, telling them that they're not cleaning up his area. And, um, one of the females wasn't, is not doing that anymore because of that situation. So there is another incident that happened now with the male, the male, uh, uh, lan- landscaper. And he said, okay, well, if you have an issue with that, we're not gonna blow in that area, because he said that some dust went into his, um, the laundry mat. And so he said, okay, then you take care of your area, we're not gonna, we're gonna avoid that situation and move on. So the next time he came around, avoided that area, so then he, he got in his face and started insulting him and telling him that with that, you know, with foul language, that how come he's not doing his job? And he's gonna make sure that he brings it to the city, that the city needs to take care of that. Um, we've had this come up several times even before I came in, uh, that the city is not responsible to take care of the businesses area. In every city, they have the actual businesses take care of their area where they're sweeping, cleaning and maintaining their front space. So they didn't contact the law enforcement, because that individual did not want to make it a legal i- issue or complaint, you know, for the, um, confrontation that he felt. But, you know, wanted it to be on the record to his, to his supervisor, so that was done. But I think we need, in our part, what we need to do is notify the businesses that that is their responsibility and not the responsibility of the city to maintain the front of their store or the alley that is part of their, um, area as well. Just like any resident has to take care of, if they're, if they live in a situ, in an area where they have an alleyway, they have to take care of their alley, alley as well. So that applies, whatever applies to the city residents, applies to the businesses as well. So I think that it's important for us to notify them of just reminding them, that's it. Cause we don't need a situation to, you know, escalate to get to a, a worse situation. So that's one, the other thing is that, um, again, with the downtown, I think that if we, if we can look at what the other, uh, projects that were included and that were approved before, that can possibly be included again and not removed and finish off the remaining of downtown. Instead of having one nice area and then that little space at the end that was never completed. So maybe you can meet with. So maybe you can meet with Javier, you can talk about what the cost would be, then bring it back to council. So that we can review it and see, um, to finish off downtown. I think it's important that we finish downtown, and like I said, that brings people to our area, you know, everybody, I I pass by. Our park, at the Heritage Park, our new park, that was, brings a lot of people down there. So if we have the beautification of our our businesses, can bring them into uh, some of those those shops. Because a lot of them think that they're not open because they look abandoned. And if they see the windows and, you know, just like a regular downtown, maybe they can attract people to come in to their their store. So that's one of the things, the other thing I um, wanted to ask. Myra, I know that there was a a check that was supposed to be paid out to a um. A psychologist, did we ever pay that out? The psychologist? For psychological evaluation, or, you know, part of the, part of the case?
Oh, yes.
So that was cash too?
Um, that it was cash, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'll have to check our bank to see if it was cash, but it was mailed out, yes.
Okay, well, I have a very serious concern. And I had spoken to our city manager, because there was a meeting that was only. Um, Sabrina, myself, and councilwoman Molina. And we voted, we took action, we didn't report on the action, because it it died. Two to one, when you didn't have two council members, they were absent, they weren't able to attend, so we only had a quorum of three. And it was two to one, and so I said it died. And I asked, I asked Erin to put it on the agenda for today, which I don't see why it should be on the agenda for us to discuss anymore. Because I went to the court website, and it's been settled. This case has been settled, we paid for an a a psychological uh, psychiatrist to evaluate. But yet it was settled with a with a quorum of three, and it was two to one, which it should have died. And I did speak to our city attorney, and she was the one that said, no, it's 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 going through. And it shouldn't have gone through, cause I know it's happened in Sanger before, where it was a quorum of three, and it was two to one, and it died, they brought it back. So my thing is, we paid for a psychologist for this case, but it was settled on, um, what's the date here? August, August, um, it says August eighth, so it was today, but it was submitted. It was submitted on the day after the twenty third of July, because that's when we had our special meeting, so it's already been settled. Uh, I don't even see why we should even have a discussion of that case, when it's been settled with two to one vote. So I am very disappointed, I I feel that we were not represented at to the to the extent. Of protecting the the city, the city at all, I had been asking to to discuss this matter. So that I can provide information to the council, so that they can make a decision based on the totality of the information that we have. Not just because we had two previous attorneys that passed, one passed the bar in twenty nineteen. The other passed the bar in twenty twenty one, to me, I'm sorry, they lacked the experience.
Uh, I, we do have a closed session item.
No, there is no close session, you have a closed session item with Torres and the city of Parlier, why, when it's already been settled, Megan?
Mayor, you asked for a closed session.
Yes, but it's been, it was to discuss, not to go to clo- uh, to settle, so that we cannot settle. I wanted to inform our council, and it was not, it was done without without me. Being able to talk to my council. So that's not, it's it's unacceptable, I'm sorry, but your job is to protect the city. Not to make decisions on the, for the city, you said two point, two, two to one was enough. On a a hundred and fifty thousand dollar dollar settlement, I'm sorry. For someone that had, it's in the court records, for someone that impersonated an officer, not once, not twice, but three times. And that also never got investigated on the money that was missing, why? Why would we settle with somebody like that? But I wanted to make sure that my counsel had all the information, and it was never, I was never allowed to. So now you wanna, it's on the agenda, and I know you did it because I asked you to, you, but but it was to avoid all of this. And and now we have to pay a hundred and fifty thousand, because it's too late to do anything, it's too late.
I suggest that you uh, go into closed session.
No, I, it's done, it's settled, what are you gonna explain to me now? The public has a right to know.
I'm not going to explain anything.
Then that's it, say, you can make your statement here.
I have no statement, you asked for closed session.
Yeah, but it was to not to settle, you settled it before I even could talk to my to my counsel.
Mayor, I did not represent the city on that.
No, but you called me.
I did not.
You called me and you said it was valid, that you were going to move forward with a two to one vote.
Uh, your honor, I mean, your honor, uh, mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I have no authority on this particular case.
On it, I told you no.
Uh, mayor, I did not do anything on this case.
Told you no.
Other than.
I wanted a, I, let me just say this, Megan, I wanted to have this meeting before we did anything. And it was done. It could have waited, I I talked to uh, Erin, and I said, we can always, if this, if there's reason to settle, we could always settle it later. But I wanted to talk to my counsel, and I was never allowed to do that. So you know what, it's pointless now, so there's no reason for us to even have a closed session about it, it's a done deal.
Mayor, that's up to you and your counsel.
Okay, well, they could, they could go ahead and sit down and listen to someone else, cause I'm not gonna discuss it for what? It's a waste of my time, it was already done, it was already filed, it's here, this is the court document of the settlement. Of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Nope. That that's it, I I, there is no public comment, I'm sorry, but, you know, I I, you guys wanna go ahead and talk about it in closed session? I'm I'm just gonna leave, I'm not gonna discuss this any fur- further, you can stay and talk to them and go over what, when it's already done.
Uh, mayor, I did not ask for a closed session, you did.
I did, to avoid this.
And the vote was.
Two to one.
Two to one, which is a valid legal vote.
Let me tell you something, and we have a body of five, and no, no, we have a, we have never ever done that.
Whether you have or you haven't, it was a legal vote.
A hundred, you need all council to be supportive of that, not just two members of the council.
I did not attend.
I voted no, and there was two council members that said, okay, but you know what? You, they they should have had the opportunity to be here, and that's what I was trying to do.
I have no authority over that.
Did not, you blocked me from all of that, you blocked me from.
No, I did not block you from anything, mayor.
Ural blocked me, I have emails and emails specifically asking for that, and you know what he told me? He told me that I could not talk to my counsel without him and you or somebody here being here, but you know what? How funny is that, because when they wanted to get rid of Neil Costanzo, guess who was here? Making that decision without legal counsel and taking action with about Neil, guess who? Our counsel, three council members.
I'm sorry, mayor, I don't have any personal information and.
And I think that we just need to move on, it is a done deal, there's nothing to discuss.
All right, then I sounds like you're asking that the closed session uh, be canceled, is that correct?
It is cl- canceled, there, it was for me to discuss with them, I had spoken to Sabrina that I wanted to update her, she said yes. And now it's already done, so so be it, we can't do nothing.
Any other council members wish to have closed session?
That does not come out of anybody else's pocket, but other than the city of Parlier.
I understand.
Okay, because you know what, that's general fund, again, general fund, and we paid for a psychologist, tell me if that makes sense. But you have representation that you recommended, uh, Megan, you recommended with only that amount of time. That they just passed the bar, have not really had handled any trial, but yet they represented us, okay, so. Cancel, yeah, okay, thank you, a meeting adjourned.